Well, good morning, Errol. Yeah, it's afternoon now. Um, to Everett Housing Authority in Everton, twenty twenty-five, and more than eight, like to call the meeting to order and do local vice chair Andrews.
Present.
Commissioner Burgess. Um, Commissioner Mandel. Errol. Commissioner Perez. He's not coming. And Commissioner Trader.
Hello.
Okay, so now we had some annual business that we need to acknowledge that. Um, EHA is waiting for a formal reappointment of two board members, myself and Paul, and an appointment to replace Commissioner Burgess. Um, we didn't anticipate receiving this in December, so one appointment, one appointments can once appointments can receive, we elect the chair and vice chair and ask for a motion to continue the office slate until the such time of the appointments and only needed. Okay, so we're going to postpone the election of chair and the election of the vice chair. So at this point in time, I'd like to call for any public comment, and commentators are limited to two minutes. Abby? Oh. Yes. What's meeting? Hello? We've got to talk.
I'm Jean Ferriault from the Delta neighborhood. And interesting note, we have, there's like five Everett Housing Authority properties within the confines of the Delta neighborhood. So this is the subject that's near and dear to our heart. Um, we're interested in getting a park district update, and I understand that possibly someone will be able to come to our next Delta neighborhood meeting to learn about the demolition and the hazmat removal and all that sort of thing, and when when the various cases are starting or funding has been secured. Sometimes we hear, yeah, it's going, no, it's not yet, no, so getting busy. Um, and the other thing I'd like to bring up is, and I'm not sure to whom to address this, but at the Madrona Square buildings, the new properties that are already full of people, families, um, parking seems to be an issue. And now the side streets, they call them tree streets, which went and locked for, uh, um, are fenced off due to people dumping garbage random at night kind of thing. And when we have our Delta neighborhood meeting, which is in the Madrona Square community room, uh, it's difficult for us to find parking because we used to park around a little bit of that side, one of the side streets there. So and now, and I always see the the street parking is always full. And there's nothing else in the neighborhood except the Madrona Square facility. So I'm just wondering if that can be addressed. So the question for the at premium.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think when you have your meetings, you could have them open the street pace so you could talk clear now. Lock them with the down after time.
And to whom would I speak about that?
Oh, that would be the hand Katrina.
Yeah, I think that, um, we'll probably work with that and see what the best solution is, um, because we're in the bathroom.
I think that would be a good school.
Yeah, I think that opening and closing would be problematic.
Right, definitely problematic.
Yeah, but there may be some of them.
Okay.
Some of us have been parking up at the Baker View, that all, every single spot is signed and staff only.
Oh, so for the, in the evening, I don't. Yeah, that should be, that might be something that we can look at maybe.
Right.
Thank you for bringing attention.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Jean, present. Do we have any, any other public comment?
So, so I'm Sean Gastro, I'm voucher eighth year. Um, October twenty-second, the Everett City Council, um, they had a vote of six to one to make Everett, uh, city here in Washington, uh, Gasprey City. On the twenty-sixth or twenty-ninth of October, a couple of days, five days later or more, uh, they went through the city ordinance, and I heard that it's passed, and I haven't got any reliable evidence yet, but I just wanted to point this out so people will know that this is going on.
Okay. If you. All right. Any further public comments? Hey, hearing that, we will now go to the executive director's report and Director Sarah Sneddon, welcome, and we're right for you.
Okay, well, hello, everyone. Good morning and afternoon.
Good to talk to you.
I got it out of the way, my first flub at the board meeting. There we go. Okay. Um, it is very wonderful to be here. I'd like to just start with that. It was a wonderful first week. Um, I'll give the board some updates on how the first week went, but I'd like to begin with just a very quick update on the shutdown. Uh, it seems to be top of everyone's mind. Last I heard, the Senate is working on voting for a continuing resolution, uh, which is difficult when we can't come to an agreement, we just continue the way things have been going. Um, so they're looking at extending that, um, through January thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Um, so once it passes the Senate, it'll go to the House. We should know more by the end of the week. Um, and so that's not really an answer. We won't really know how things stand, but it does get us through at least, um, the end of January. This is what that proposal. All right, now I don't have any other, um, information on, um, the government shutdown. Um, my first week, um, was very full of excitement and warm welcomes. Um, I do want to give the board a little bit of, uh, information and an update on an all-staff meeting that we had on Monday. Um, it was very well attended, um, and we had staff, um, inform what is one thing they wanted me to know as I step into this meeting. Um, and I'd like to share some of the results of that with the board. Um, so what we, what we did was we did a, um, kind of three-step exercise. I really wanted to engage with everyone as much as I could. Um, I let everyone know that my, my first goal is to listen and to look and not to make any immediate changes. But I also let them know I was very eager and it would take time to meet with everyone. Um, so I wanted to at least be able to engage with folks a little bit right away. So we had everyone write down on a card what's one thing they wanted me to know as I step into this call. Um, then part two of the exercise was to break out into groups. Um, so everyone broke out, and I think we had about ten groups. Don't quote me on that. Um, and we just guided everyone through some ground rules for teamwork, which was to include every voice, listen with curiosity, and respect each voice. And as a group, they were tasked with agreeing on one message to share with me. And those, um, those responses were presented on a different color note card, right? So I had a box of white note cards for individual thoughts, a box of, I believe it was pink note cards, don't quote me on the color, for the group, um, individual message. And then for the final activity, the entire group as a whole was tasked with agreeing on one core message. Um, and I'd like to share that core message with the board collectively, together, the voice of the housing authority. What matters most to them is to build trust through transparent communication. So that is going to be my single most focus. Um, I heard that loud and clear. I agree with that. I'm excited about that, um, and that's how I'm going to work with the senior team on moving us forward. Uh, just wanted to share that with you. In the coming weeks, I am going to continue meeting with staff and residents as well as community leaders to build those relationships, um, and begin assessing some key metrics as well. Um, I do also want to share with you some strengths that I'm seeing, um, after my first week. Um, some strengths is really dedicated and talented staff. Um, I am, I am truly moved. Um, I also see a community that's very eager for strong partnership with the Everett Housing. Uh, so from where I'm sitting in my first week, we are on solid foundation and ready to build from. Some opportunities that I've seen, uh, resident services, some FSS grants, um, some Ross grants, and I can explain those in detail. I can go on and on forever about those. Um, also some, um, MTW flexibilities for increasing our PBB caps, um, and potentially an agency rebrand are some ideas that have been thrown. So, but for right now, I do want to say I do plan to continue listening and learning. Um, I really am committed to not making any major changes in sixty days until I understand. Okay, but if something's necessary, we certainly will do that. Um, and then in the coming months, I would like to collaboratively work with the board and the senior staff on, um, refining or recommitting what our short-term priorities are. Um, and then after, after that, we can work on a really solid twelve to eighteen-month action plan. So that is my updates. Um, and again, thrilled to be here.
Great, thank you. Um, so next we have the approval of a minute, so I need to call for a motion to approve the following. Um, regular meeting held August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, and the special meeting held September twelfth, twenty twenty-five. I have a motion.
Move to approve those.
Sure. Perfect. All those in favor?
All right, fine.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion star. Um, next we're going to talk about the consent agenda, and we're going to call for a single motion to approve a consent agenda which has a section eight payments for the months of August through October twenty twenty-five. So summary vouchers of month of Octo- August through October twenty twenty-five and the quarterly financial report, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And do all have the motion.
Move to approve.
You do have a second?
Okay.
All right, and then, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You go.
So next, it is, I don't even know what time it is. It is twelve twelve. And at this time, um, we would like to convene into the public hearing to amend the move-to-work supplement amendment for fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-five. I'd like to open the floor for public comments. Director Melanie Pinkleton, did I say it right? I've never said your last name out loud. And, uh, provide a brief summary of the proposed, um, MTW supplement. And then again, public comments.
Okay, so we are proposing, um, to MTW waivers, uh, for our program, and the first waiver is on our choice mobility, so that applies to our project-based voucher clients. Um, previously what we've been using for the mobility is a tiered process where, um, first our rental assistance demonstration, RAD PBB properties, um, and pivotal points, um, can request their moving voucher within the twelve months. Um, and then twelve months of occupancy, based on that tier, they fall in order. Um, the new process that we're proposing is that still our REDPBB properties and pivotal point, um, and pivotal point because that, uh, property contains missing clients, and we want to give them that opportunity, can still request their tenant-based voucher, um, after the twelve months of occupancy, but for all our other PBB properties, uh, households can then request their tenant-based voucher after twenty-four months of occupancy to help provide a little more stability before they start moving on into the private market. Um, our second waiver is on student financial aid. Um, and our current process is that student financial aid, any grants or scholarships exceeding the cost of tuition and books may be counted as income depending on if the student lives with their parents and if the student is either ahead of households, spouse, or go ahead, and over age twenty-three with a dependent child. And the rule that we're proposing is that all student financial aid is excluded from the income calculation, uh, regardless of the other factors. And this will allow our clients to help retain some of that money and continue working toward bettering their education and improving their.
Do we have any public comments on that?
In, I just, in the past, we've used that financial aid as income?
Some of it, if it exceeds the cost of the tuition and books, the cost of attendance basically for attending, and that's the head regulation, yes, that we're hoping to waive and get through that.
Wow.
Yeah. It's very burdensome administratively, too. And it doesn't, it doesn't happen very often either. It's not, it not very often, and it's really not. It's a lot of work to include maybe a very small amount.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Two questions. So are these students that they are living in the unit?
Yes, they're in the unit with the section eight voucher. Or project base.
Just registered, but living.
Correct.
Over.
Yeah.
Okay, I need to, uh, call for a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
So good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, well, um, I'm going to adjourn the public hearing at twelve sixteen. Next, we'll move on to the items for individual consideration. The first is resolution number sixteen twenty-one, approving the section one twenty-five cafeteria plan for calendar year twenty twenty-six, and HR manager Kelly King to introduce.
Okay, so, um, the section, uh, one twenty-five plan, it's an employer-sponsored benefit, um, that allows our employees to pay for certain, uh, qualified benefits with pre-tapped dollars. Um, so that reduces their taxable income and it helps them to save on federal state FICA taxes. Um, so each benefits from the savings on, um, our portion of FICA taxes as well. Um, and EHA has had this benefit in place, uh, for at least the last several, several years. Um, we use a third party called Health Equity. Um, they put together all of our plan paperwork, uh, for us. Um, and if the plan is approved, then we send out the form to all employees so that they can elect to participate, um, during the twenty twenty-six, uh, benefits plan here.
Chief. Hearing that, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the resolutions, Dean twenty-one.
Move to approve.
One second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry. Well, I don't see twenty sixteen twenty-one in this.
Now, what's the, it happened.
See it. Oh, on there. I just want to have it for record.
Yeah, you just, no, 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 everything?
No.
Okay. Let's approach him forward. Next, we have resolution number sixteen twenty-two, adopting disposal of obsolete information technology equipment. Director Sharina Austin to introduce.
Good afternoon. Um, I'm seeking approval of resolution number sixteen twenty-two, which is the disposal of obsolete computer equipment. There are ninety-two desktops, uh, thirty-three, uh, monitors and eighty-seven laptops for a total of two hundred and twelve items that, uh, are slated to go to surplus. These are decommissioned computers that are no longer viable for EHA.
Any questions?
We're, we're going to sell them surplus?
That is the per, the first plan.
Okay.
If we have buyers.
And then after that?
Disposal. Yeah, recycle.
Recycle?
Yeah.
And we give them to? Maybe?
Um.
Yes, I'm not sure how that works.
That's tough because if we do that, we want to make sure that we do it in a way that's fair and equitable.
Yeah.
And, and that's a long conversation and, um.
Also thinking maybe a computer.
Sure, yeah. And, but we would want to stock that with upgraded, you know, usable, usable equipment.
Okay.
Um, so I, I, yeah, I would agree with, with the plan that they have.
Shut the stage, we'll try to shut this.
And, and you are restocking? You have?
We've already stopped. They've been, um, in the garage for a while. They just need to be formally decommissioned.
So at this point, I need to call for a motion to approve resolution sixteen twenty-two. All those, sorry, motion first.
So, do you like?
The second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we're.
Oh, great, and we're coming into the. We're in there. Nice.
Next up, we have resolution sixteen twenty-three, adopting revisions and additions to the personnel manual policy now. Also, Director Sarita Austin, turn your desk.
Thank you. This has five subparts because there are five personnel policies that are part of this resolution sixteen twenty-three. The first one is the reduction in force. Um, this has been updated from the current policy to modernize and clarify our approach to workforce reductions and ensure consistency. Um, further down in the packet, there are grant lines, um, that will be on our online version. We didn't print them off because the packet got extremely large. Um, so that is the first one, is personnel, um, reduction in force. The second one is the personnel policy four A three, which is designation of director-level positions as key personnel under FMLA. This is a federal regulation and EHA is, um, taking the stance that it will adopt that regulation for key employees to be in our personal manual, so that is clarifying for all director-level positions under FMLA. This is a, a federal exception as part of FMLA, and we are just, um, codifying that. Okay. The next one is the annual time off for non-union employees. This is to bring, um, non-union employees to the level of, uh, union employees by way of their most recent, um, contract, their CBA. And so it clarifies for employees over ten years, an additional two days of annual leave to match the CBA for absentee. The next one is Washington Pay Family Medical Leave. This is under House Bill twelve thirteen. This one is not slated to take effect until January first, but this is codifying the new regulations, um, under PFML. Um, and it's pretty much taken, pretty much all the language of from PFML that are going to be updated the first. And it also, uh, make sure that we put in writing that employees, we are seeking a thirty-day advance notice for employees before they go out of PFML unless they are not able to use. And then the last one is, um, appendix B, which is smoke-free environment, which brings us in compliance with the law and as vaping. Does anyone have any questions on any of those proposed revisions in addition?
I do.
Yes.
So resolution sixteen twenty-three, uh, is talking about the revisions and additions to personnel policy manual. That's all personnel, that's the whole manual, right?
Yes.
And the other one is, has to do with the non-represented, bringing up parity, bringing them in, in the same level.
Yes.
So, uh, just, just for curiosity's sake, the resolution itself, I mean, that's change in manual, right, change in policies, that's something that either of the unions that represent our workers have given any input to?
No, um, these, uh, all of the ones except for the one for annual leave are statutory.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that, that includes the, the changing of the personnel policy?
Yes.
Okay. Right on, thanks very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions? And hearing none, um, I would need a motion to approve, um, resolution sixteen twenty-three.
Move to approve sixteen twenty-three.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And you move forward. Okay, next we have resolution number sixteen twenty-four, adopting reservations to the MTW supplement, and Director Melanie will introduce.
Yes, so again, we are seeking approval, um, to add those to MTW waivers regarding the choice mobility, uh, and waiving all the, uh, financial aid income from a household. Um, and so, uh, given the overview there, were there any other questions on that?
Resolution. Right. And I would ask, um, for a motion to approve resolution sixteen twenty-four.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. So next is the execution, executive session that we do not have, so we'll move forward to the adjournments. And, um, it looks like we're going to have to, um, figure out another one. We need to determine the dates and time of the regular board meeting, February sixteenth is the term out there.
What was that date?
February sixteen.
She was sixteen, that is a holiday, seven-pack poker set. Yeah. Jay?
Mm-hmm.
It's kind of. That's, that's not him, though. It's the, oh, is it?
February.
Right, right. No, it's.
No.
It's scheduled. Right.
You were working on President's Day?
No, I don't think we don't.
Yeah, so the. Yeah, determine later.
You've got all the.
I think that's everyone. Sir, Mr. Sten, it's a trial.
Yeah, yes. It's already.
I can see. Um, so I'll call for motion to adjourn the meeting. So first, the final.
My best shot look there.
I don't know. Do, we need.
Okay, tell me about that. And at this present time, we'd like to do a financial.
Okay, so this is a financial, uh, summary for quarter ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Um, Jomashen, as you see, is not here, he's on a vacation day, so I'm just filling him for him. Um, so if you have any questions, you can address it to him when he gets back. No, that's. So last quarter, we go forward, um, it was communicated that our financials were, are concerning. Um, and though we're not out of the woods yet, um, we are going in the right direction. Um, I want to make sure I share that with you. Um, there has been several changes, um, as we look into the areas of saving money and being smarter in our spending. Um, as you know, I just, you know, is that we've already had some staff reductions. Um, we've had some temporary staff and consultants have been cut. Um, and then we're trying to do more with the staff that we have, um, to fill in those gaps. Um, and then we also have OT that's down, down by about fifty, fifty-five percent. Um, and then development has scaled down on the spending as well. Right, so if you, um, first page, um, the overview, so HUD has, um, yeah, fire your minds, right? HUD is providing funding for October, November already. We've already received the funding. Um, I sat in a narrow, um, meeting, uh, last week where, um, they have first-line communication with HUD, um, and they, as far as they know, they've been told we are going to receive December funding as promised as well. So, um, as far as the financial impact, um, I think we're doing good through December. Um, we don't know about, you know, starting in January. Um, but there is, there, you know, the impact of the shutdown for operational is kind of challenging right now, just trying to get a hold of people and the staff deduction that's taken. So, um, that's what's going on with government shutdown. Um, and then we have, um, I'm more on the development and finance side, we sold Royal Oaks, um, property, it was, um, you know, we sold that in about late October for three point two million. And one point one million we used to pay off Pepperwood and McCottages loans. Um, and then the remaining two point of one million is reserved for future development activities.
All right.
And so for the quarterly, uh, continuing with the real quarterly financial overview, thirty-four of our thirty-nine properties are in cash flow positive. Um, development spending remains low. Um, it looks like about a hundred and fourteen K a month. Uh, unstrict, unrestricted cash has decreased by one. Uh unrestricted unrestricted cash has decreased by one point six million because of the monthly net negative cash outfalls. Um and then I already talked to you about the cost control um things that we have put in place at the beginning will uh stand up and. Yes. All right, if you go to the next page, we're gonna go into um Jemeshen's changed this a little bit, probably in comparison to what you guys well seen last quarter. He's kind of separated it into um four categories. The first category is then federally funded programs and um operations. The next one is the EHA on properties. The next one is nonprofit properties and then the tax credit properties. Um and if you look down individually, um you'll see that the federally funded, uh if you go down to the cash flow at the bottom, the federally funded programs, um there is a loss there, but if you look at it as a whole, uh the net cash um flow is positive. Um credit, and gonna go ahead and turn the page. So we have um the first one is this is the HUD funding that we get, which is the six federally funded programs. That's HCP, EHVE, HD mainstream, MTW, non-rehab, and FSS. Um and if you look at the bottom there, the cash flow, there's a small loss. Um it's pretty much due to this charging overhead for IT and HR salaries. Um and that is going to change at the beginning of the year, where we're only gonna have HCB staff. Um and any type of expenses being charged there, beginning. Um and then we have the operations CLC, um project management and project uh development. And um it looks like if you look at um the pay today budget um versus the pay today actual, um we really didn't bring in what was expected and that was more to do with um developer fee and incentive management. All right, we turn the page, go to EHA on the properties. Ones highlighted in the blue there are the ones that are not our negative cash. Um and this is not really anything new. Um this uh this just continues um uh with the exception, Pepperwood is now on this one. It's showing negative cash flow, um but um that is one of the ones that we paid off. Um and so this, um we won't have the interest expense on this one. Um and interest on this anymore. Um and I might not say this is, this is the EHA. And if you go on to nonprofits and the two oh two properties, um pretty much um all of them are cash flowing positive with the exception of limbs on this. And then if we go over to the tax credit properties, we are cash flowing on all the properties. There's two pages to this, um with the exception of Pineview and Lakewood too. Um any questions?
All ready now. So now we will. Now, we we do the adjournment of the meeting.
Do we need to?
Need to adjourn.
There we go, nice. All of them.
I don't know that choice. For a turn. Thank you.
We're looking at having a special meeting in December. Um so we'll be getting a clue on that. Um hopefully, some my business.
Okay, it's okay. And I I don't know if I can bring this up, this app, since it's not me. I I was just wondering if we could do, I'd look for us to do a a welcome reception for Sarah.
I believe that's in the works.
Excellent.
I have two questions. Do you want to hear about the grants? Do you still want to hear about that? I'm sorry? Oh, okay, about grants, so I Kristen's ready for that. But also, I'm gonna also mention, we talked about um on, I think, did we say December fifteenth, maybe having a special board meeting um to approve um our EHA agency budgets?
Yeah, that's about.
Oh, you are.
And are we gonna have a going away party?
Oh, we don't need to do that. We can have a welcome. I started a lot. Good, good, thank you. So a lot of time.
It's been my pleasure, but tough to speak up to. Absolutely.
Any curveball grants? Sarah.
Should we, yeah, do we want to reopen them?
Yeah, it's a real good meeting.
Sarah, yeah. Okay, so let's talk the adjournment. Absolutely. And let's talk.
Okay, so yeah, I was asked to put together a um information about the grants that we've applied for recently or that we are planning to apply for. And so it's on this chart and apologies for how small the print is. Um but I just decided to order it by the date that we applied. Um so you'll see, you know, there's a spot for the project we applied for, what the funding sources, the funder, when we applied, what we applied for, the amount, and then the amount that we received. So as you can see, a fair amount of these are for our Ben Young Senior Housing Development. We've been applying for public funds for that project since twenty twenty-four. And as is often the case with real estate development projects, it usually can take a couple of rounds of um funding applications until you have a fully funded project. Um and I also wanted to note here that with Ben Young, uh we have made a lot of changes to the project um design and financial structure to increase um the competitiveness of our project for public funds. And so our total the total development costs are down. Um we've done value value engineering with the design. And so we're really hopeful that as we enter these next funding rounds, that we'll be, we'll have a more competitive project. Um but so far for Ben Young, the um the only grant we've received is from the Washington State Department of Commerce as part of the Clean Energy Community Grant Program. And then I also wanted to point out that um periodically, the Department of Commerce releases um special rounds for the State Housing Trust Fund. Um in this case, it was a repair fund. So for any projects that already had received Washington State Housing Trust Fund, we could go in and apply for them. Um if we had repairs over a certain period of time that we wanted to try to get funded publicly. And so we were able to secure um about two hundred thousand, a little over two hundred thousand for um Pepperwoods, cottages, and Madrona Square. So we were successful with those funding rounds. Um and then we have a number of funding applications that we've submitted um that we have not heard back yet or that we are planning to apply for. And they're mostly for Ben Young. We have applied to uh the Public Housing Authority Transit Reinement Development Fund with Snohomish County, a million dollars. We're waiting to hear if our project's eligible for that. Um we applied for the twenty twenty-five Connected Housing, Connecting Housing to Infrastructure Program, otherwise known as CHIP um through the Department of Commerce in collaboration with the city. The city is actually the applicant on our behalf um for a million dollars for Ben Young. Um we have applied, uh we applied to the twenty twenty-five Affordable Housing and Behavioral Health Capital Fund um for eight million dollars. This is our second time going in for that funding. Um we did not, our project was not recommended for funding by the Technical Advisory Council, but we did score quite a bit higher than we had in previous rounds. So we came in third and two projects. Um we uh also just applied to the Washington State Housing Trust Fund um through the Department of Commerce for three and a half million. We'll find out um by December if we've received that funding award. Um we are also need to go in for the Public Housing Authority four percent tax credit program through the commission, and that is to secure volume cap to be able to um issue private activity bonds, um since that'll be owned by a partnership. And so the uh the constraint is that the commission allocates bond cap and they can only allocate so much across the state in any given year. Um so we, you know, should find out about that in twenty twenty-six. Um and then the final one for Ben Young is that we we we've heard that there will be a a spring round for Snohomish County Affordable Housing and Behavioral Health Funds. So we intend to um go in for funding there. We hope that if we receive a state housing trust fund award, then we'll just apply for the balance that we need, which would be four and a half million instead of the eight million we'll be applying for.
I wish. So when you replied, you came in third, that's that was the behavioral health problem?
Yes.
Did they meet with you, give you feedback so that we apply in the spring?
We um solicited feedback from, well, so the the county won't um communicate on any projects until the funding round is closed, so it's technically still open.
Oh.
Um and so until the county council approves awards, we won't be able to talk to staff about our particular application. But in previous rounds, some of the feedback we got is that the funding amount that we applied for was too high. The original request in twenty twenty-four was for thirteen million, which was the entire amount available, you know, in the fund.
Oh.
Um so this year, we lowered the request. Um the other thing, so the the projects that received the recommendation for funding um have have received most of their other funding awards. And um there was also, I'm trying to think of, so we've we've been analyzing, we've been probably ranked everything to predict what it was that we could do with our application. Um but I think at the end of the day, it seems as though the projects that are moving forward are for supportive housing for um it's, you know, chronically homeless households. And so it might have been that they have additional points for um both look very vivid occupations. Um they don't publish their evaluation criteria, so you don't, we don't know exactly how we're really scored. Um but we would be interested in seeing more of that on the stage so that we could.
And I add that Kristen and her team did a really good job putting that application together and listening to what we heard before. Um because some of the things that we had done before for us. And so we actually, when we looked at the screen, we did pretty well. Um there were really funding projects that had already been funded. They were looking to finish those projects. So my my thought is hopefully the next round, you know, won't be successful.
Yeah, yeah, I think one of the clear pieces of feedback we got was the total development cost um per unit. And so we've really been working hard with our um consultants to do the value engineering exercises to get that down as close as we can to the the state max. It's just, it's this project has a lot of special components like, you know, um air conditioning and a lot of sustainability features and just like the location that it's in and the site, it's it's driving a product. We're doing everything we can goes down. Um and then the final one I just want to point out here was related to Baker Heights demolition. We've put in a few, a few applications, one application um with the Senate and House of Representatives that wasn't successful, and we're exploring a new um funding source that is essentially for cleanup of um hazardous materials. It can include soil um contaminated soils, contaminated structures. Um it's through the uh United States Environmental Protection Agency, EPA. And so we're we're still trying to figure out if we're for eligible, but we, it looks as though we could apply for up to four and a half. For that, which would get us about fifty percent of the hazardous materials abatement and demolition.
And then on another note, um you know, we're keeping an eye on what's going on in the governor's office. We have a new governor. He has some different programs that are going into play. Um Nicholas Carr is um a aide that has been working in housing authority to do that. We had some meetings with him. And we're, um Sarah and I will be talking about what I found out to date and then end up working with our lobbyists on how we can get some inroads and get. They're doing some pilot projects, um getting rid of some regulatory um requirements and working with individual cities um to do that. I know effort in my discussions with the mayor is very interesting, working on that. So we'll be talking a lot before I before I get to it.
I'm sort of a comment on that. I'm sure you're all aware of this, but it's literally what I do for work. So if we're relying on any state money, it could evaporate. So then projected that. You sure it falls?
What for that?
Yeah, pretty awesome.
I want to say thank you for this. Um if we can keep, if you could keep us updated on these projects, that would be really great. If there's any like letters of support, things that we may need, our, we may let me know. I can help to advocate for some of that. This is fantastic.
Since you're turning.
Is this the third motion or?
I'll be second.
Fourth move over.
Okay.
Oh, I I'm with second. Hurry up, hurry up.